You aren't too mean to him, are you? You aren't too mean to him, are you? You're mean to me.
All right, six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started with our board meeting. We've got some work session items to take care of, and where is Garrett?
I'm over here in the meeting.
All right. So, thank you for being here tonight. We've got three or four things to take care of on the agenda, and we start every one of our meetings with prayer and the pledge. If you would rise, and Alderman Harry Williams is going to lead us in prayer tonight, and we have Mayor's Youth Council that's going to lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here. Harry, if you would. Amen, amen. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. All right. And Joey, you will be happy to know all the microphones are working tonight, so we have fresh batteries and everything, Board, so if somebody out there can hear, we will certainly address that. All right, Garrett, I know you're going to go first. I've got a few slides to go through. Hey, Mary, just come on up and sit down, I'll get to it, then I'm going to turn this iPad over to you and let you drive it, okay? All right, so, audience, for those of you who haven't been in here before, instead of having a separate call work session at five or 5:30, and those of us still working have trouble getting here sometimes, we just try to do it all, blend it in at six o'clock and go as long as we need to. So, without further ado, it's been a great week, Board, I want to tell you, great Veterans' Day, had a great lighting of the Christmas tree Saturday night, got some beautiful weather, and a lot going on around here, a lot of positive energy, and really appreciate that. So, I appreciate y'all coming out tonight, and we'll navigate through this. So, this is a general agenda, I've got six or eight informational slides I'll go through, I'll get to projects at the end. I want to welcome Garrett here with Rankin First, that's going to go through something I saw two weeks ago called 2030 Momentum, and behind that will be CLO, our friends here, and they'll work through that, and I've got all of their slides on here, and I know you wonder what polymorphic is, but is Ben here, is he, there you are, hey Ben, glad you made it. So, I got your slides loaded too, and then we'll go over some projects and just try to get us all lined out. Now, I didn't, I went through some of this with a homeowner association meeting the other night, and I didn't do that again, so you don't have to see that stuff again, I just made a line chart, and we'll go through it just to catch everybody up to make sure we're kind of all on the same page, as we work through some of the projects that are about to come forward. And Garrett, we'd invite you to stick around if you'd like, anybody in the audience, you can stick around if you'd like, as we go through this whole thing this evening. Thank you to the not being in the front lobby, I would recommend you go take some pictures, it's very pretty, they spent basically two days down here, and it is a very beautiful lobby down here. So, that's over in the corner, when it really strikes an eye right here, I encourage you to go look at it, get an opportunity, come in, house, be ready to take some pictures, they do a wonderful job for us. Mr. Eddie, most of y'all don't know Mr. Eddie, he's in the background all the time, but his family, his birth family have a gap, I don't know how that happened over here in the big room, I bet there were people in, had a bunch of eats, ask him over here that day when that picture, but we're very fortunate, we wish he didn't want to go through this job, and that's always, and he does his really thing as to what water rates were, and where Brandon fell in with everybody else, so you've got that hard copy in front of you just for reference. I like it when you get the news media that goes out and get these numbers, because, you know, they're factual in that regard. Energy finally came out with their reporting streetlights, they've got an app here, did you make any hard copies of this tonight? Did you make any? You have some hard copies, are they in the back? So, anybody in the audience and Board, we'll get you a hard copy of this, you scan that QR code, and you can report a streetlight out, and they're very braggadocious to say it only takes a few days for them to get to it, but, Harry, we'd like to test them on a few, right? I've got a couple in my neighborhood, I'm going to test them. So, Board, test them, turn that over. And Georgia Ann, I don't know if she's listening or not, but in the morning, we need to get that out to our homeowner associations, okay? Please, make a note of that. Board, we, Joey took a lot of time in building this, the timeline that we're on for the zoning ordinance, I've got it read at the bottom, we're not going to, ain't no way, shape, form, or fashion we're going to make December 1st, it just, it can't happen. So, I can automatically say we're going to do our best to get it by the 15th, all right? But I'm just telling you, it's working through something with hyphens and commas and everything else down to the nuance, and Joey and I spent a lot of time on this, and going to spend a lot more time on it, and we've got a lot of changes to bring to you to look at. So, I'm just giving you a heads up, it will not be December 1st. Handouts and issues of the day, I've got stuff stacked up in front of you. David, yours is on the left, Jared, yours is on the right, I think Chris, Harry, and Lou have theirs. Y'all saw Sharon get up and walk out a few minutes ago, there's a meeting going on the other end of town, she's in a civic club, and they're having election of officers down there tonight, Rankin County Republican Women, and she had to go down there to take care of a few things, so that's where she's at for the moment, she'll be back in a few minutes. So, the handouts that you see in front of you, you asked for the traffic study, I don't know why I put report in there when I typed that, for Highway 80 and 471 from College Street down to the interstate, you've got that total study, it's six years old, read into it what you will. You've got an NPO Projects Activity Report, when we met last week, I made a copy of all that, you can make comparisons to the three counties, the cities, and how we fledged out in that, and see what's going on across the metro. Number three, mail to NPO transfer. Now, I warned you, Board, warned us, everybody in the room, Matthew knew it was coming as well, so there's a call for projects that is due right now. So, we need to figure out what that is, because that has to be submitted in January. So, we're going to be making an application for transportation. Now, this is not TA, this is safety project, I sent you an email earlier today, it broke it down to five categories in there, you've got safety, bridges, congestion, pavement management, and all these, those five entities in there, but there will be 32 million to devy up between all of the cities and the three counties, and if we're going to make an application for that, I need to know, because Matthew and I, Matthew, you're in the back of the room, back there hiding somewhere, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, if I misstate anything, Matthew, please give a shout out, the sooner, now, and y'all already know, I would appreciate you spending some time with that Garver study, Garver's the one that did the Highway 80 study, I would really appreciate you spending some time on that, because you know how I feel, I'm not going to change, not going to ask you to vote on it, but we need to convert that to an LPA project, and then we, on behalf of the city, can make application for these funds. That's one place we can use them. We've got about three or four places, Highway 18 would be another one, signalization would be another one, at Home Depot, we've just got a variety of things that we might can make a play for, and we need to think through that, so we need, Matthew and I need to hear from you. Number four, water rates analysis by WET, you got that, I find that to be interesting, you'll find a task force was generated by the Lieutenant Governor, yes, I and other municipalities concerned about that, because I remember the day, it was 12 years ago, when a little phraseology fell into, Mr. Baker can remember that, it wasn't going to affect municipalities when he was in the legislature, state government put some phraseology in the Department of Revenue concerning Section 42 properties, which we, we had six of those, now we have five in Brandon, that pays zero, zero, zero ad valorem taxes, but we have to provide police and fire, and they don't pay any taxes. If they can show zero profit at the end of the year, which is real hard to do, you just write your manager a check for what's left, and you go to zero, there are 13 of those properties in Rankin County, I remember that happening, and I remember the state government saying, "We're going to fix that for municipalities." They didn't fix it, still exists today. So, when I see things like this, a task force for affordable housing, you know, we kind of looked at it to begin with, we first got this a couple of weeks ago, and you see some responses, an email from Sherry Vizet going around back to us, and we had a long Zoom call that Joey sat in with me on, and where there were planners from around the state, Hernando, Oxford, Ridgeland, Pearl, Flowood, and Brandon were the ones that participated in that, I think that was about all. You know, so it's kind of obvious that we're getting targeted there with that, and there's going to be another, they're going to come back together December 1st or December 2nd, and we're, we've been asked to generate some data for them, but the complaints are, it takes us too long to generate permits, the complaints are, it takes too, it's too much trouble to get water, the problem is, the square footage is too big, too much, blah, 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 all this kind of stuff. So, you can look at the corporations that are listed in that email, and you can look at the senators that are listed under the task force announcement by the Lieutenant Governor, and you can see who's going to be at the table talking about this. So, I tend to look, I began to look at it selfishly, like it was just Brandon, then Mississippi, and then you watch the national news, it's national news everywhere about affordable housing. Interesting conversation going on that Mr. Trump's talking about, I never thought you'd ever see a 50-year mortgage, but they're talking about things like that, or a portable mortgage, I don't know how they're going to figure that out. Bottom line, we in cities like Brandon, that are moving along and doing all the right thing in the right order, are somewhat under attack for doing things and trying to protect that. Now, I feel like home rule exists, and who knows, they're telling us, nothing's going to happen, nothing's going to come of this, they said the same thing with Section 42 properties, but yet we got stuck with it. So, our antenna are up, and we're going to be full force looking at it, and I'll be very vocal about it. Number six, reports from Housing Task Force, you got that, that's those red emails, you see some wording that was in there, Notice of NPO TA Grant Awards. So, last week, when the announcement was made for Call for Projects, there was also, I've got a flyer on your desk, the number of cities that made application for that, and where the three that Brandon succeeded in getting that, those grant awards, I'm going to speak to more of that in just a minute, those dollars. CLO Media Support for last year, I got you a hard copy on every nickel that was spent there, Tracy did a great job of generating all that today, and I know sometime, you know, Mondays just seem like Mondays are Mondays sometimes, and then, again, if you missed the Christmas tree lighting program and other things going on, I'm sorry you missed it, but we're going to meet, Jennifer and I are going to meet again, and we're going to talk about how to make that even better next year, it's probably twice as many downtown this year as there were last year, and we're just going to plan on twice as many again next year as this year, and make it that much better again. All right, I'm going to turn this over to you, Garrett, if y'all would, welcome.
Appreciate you coming.
I appreciate it, if you're right. Mayor gets to do this every two weeks, I have to do this one time a year, hopefully. Good afternoon or good evening, my name is Garrett Wright, I think I've had a chance to meet most of y'all, I am the new Executive Director for Rankin First. If you're not familiar with Rankin First, hopefully you are, we are the economic development entity for Rankin County. So, what we do, we get to work with our elected officials across the community, our business community, and also our supervisors on a daily basis to work with our existing companies in the community, as well as working to recruit new companies in the community. So, we are just the tip of the spear when it comes to economic development, nothing we do gets completed just because of our organization, we have to work with our mayors, supervisors, as well as all of our elected officials and all of our private companies across the community. And ultimately, what the mayor has me speaking here today is about an initiative that we are underway with at Rankin First called Momentum 2030. If you're not familiar with how we're funded, we're funded heavily from the Board of Supervisors, as well as we get a portion of hotel motel sales tax earmarked for truly economic development, site development, and then also, we have a private arm in our organization called the Committee of 100, all that's within our legislation that we were founded with in the 90s. That Committee of 100 is what we're looking to grow and bolster, which is, I'll go into a few details about that, but our private arm is our Committee of 100, it's probably not something we've leveraged properly over the last many years as an organization, we've got strong representation from the private side, but ultimately, it's something that, if we look at our peers across the state, it's something we need to bolster even further, and I'll go along the lines of why we need to do that. But before I get into that, these are our Board of Directors, each of our Board of Directors are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, all the supervisors get two appointees, and then District 2 gets one appointee, I don't know why, but District 2 only gets one appointee. I'm sure you recognize several names on this Board of Directors. Now, before I get into where we're taking our organization, where we're taking Rankin First, I do want to go to recent successes we've had across Rankin County, because I think as an organization, as a community, we always need to celebrate something that we've already accomplished, we need to make sure our citizens are aware of what's been accomplished in economic development across our community. Other regions, other communities do this very well, something we are working to elevate, to make sure that we celebrate things that have already happened in our community, not just talking about what's forthcoming. A recent project that we had an announcement about a month ago was Avery Express in Richland, a great, another logistics company that's expanding in the city of Richland, a project y'all are very familiar with, have been very supportive on, is Avio Digital, $6 billion investment in our state, one of the largest investments in the state history, so very proud of that one, I appreciate y'all's continued support on that one. Another one that we probably do not appreciate enough, but we absolutely have to, is Ergon. Just like every other private business, Ergon has choices of where they invest that next dollar, and ultimately, Ergon continues to invest in Rankin County, continues to invest in making and growing their headquarters, and ultimately, those people live across the region, they live across Rankin County, so we're very proud to have Ergon's headquarters in here, and they'll continue to invest in our community. One project I want to make sure that we talk about here for a moment, because it goes into why we're doing what we're doing with Momentum 2030, and why we do what we do in economic development. Manasha Packaging is a great example of a project that, that company was going through a consolidation effort. Manasha purchased that facility from the former owner over in Pilahatchie, and through that effort, they were ultimately deciding where to invest their next dollar, or where to close up shop and where to expand. So, the Pilahatchie facility was actually on the chopping block of being consolidated, that lost a lot of jobs in Pilahatchie, and this is not just Pilahatchie, this happens every day across corporate America, happens every day across our community, but ultimately, we were able to work with the city there, also able to work with that company to secure that investment, get an $80 million investment, and secure those jobs in our community. And what that shows is, ultimately, every company, no matter how big or how small, has decisions of where they're going to invest that next dollar, and we've got to make sure we're cognizant of where we're going to support them, how we're going to support them, to make sure they invest those dollars right here in the city of Brandon or in Rankin County specifically. So, I do want to make sure we celebrate what has happened in our community over the last many years, because we've had a lot of success in Rankin County. But as an organization, as Rankin First, where we are going as an organization is growing our private arm of our organization, and we are moving to a more metric-driven, responsible organization to our elected officials, as well as to the private sector. If you look across our peer organizations across the state and across the southeast, they come out with very strong metrics of what they're going to do over the next three years, five years, whether that's capital investment, job creation, as well as how many sites they're going to develop, what they're going to do on workforce development, tourism, they're ultimately responsible for holding that, just like any other private businesses, just like any small business, large business, they're accountable for what they do, and that's what we're doing as an economic development organization. Ultimately, Rankin First, Rankin County would been successful, our population's nearly doubled over the last 20, 25 years, so we've been very much a reactive organization, but we're having a shift now to much more of a proactive organization, and that's where we're taking Momentum 2030, is making sure that we're on par with our peer organizations, and making sure we have aligned processes with our private businesses, as well with our elected officials to make sure that we've got one concerted voice for how we move our region forward, how we move our communities forward. So, ultimately, what you'll see with Momentum 2030, it's not a 50-page strategic plan, it is ultimately a metric-driven plan, and you'll get copies of this hereafter, on five key metrics of what we are doing every day as an organization, what we're focused on every single day as an organization. And ultimately, you probably expect some of these from our organization, they're pretty easy. First one's business attraction, retention, and expansion, that's probably what you know us as, that's what we do with Avio, that's what we do with all the other companies across the community, making sure we retain and keep that talented workforce here in our community. Other aspects that we are involved in, that you may not be familiar though, is workforce development, legislative advocacy, and tourism. And one other item that you would expect us to be involved in is site development. But ultimately, all these are extremely important to making sure we have a community, an overall region where people want to live and continue investing in, and you'll see here in a few moments on the metrics, all of these go hand in hand. If we don't do site development well, we can't do business attraction well, and if we don't do legislative advocacy well, we can't do business attraction well, and ultimately, tourism, which is one item that I think is extremely important for y'all, if we can't create an environment where people want to live and visit, how can we attract new companies and new residents and new talent to our community as well? So, that's why all these things go cohesively together, and that's why we're having as one Momentum 2030. These are the ones I'm most excited about, I'm excited about all the key focus areas, but these are the ones I'm most excited about, I'll tell you, over the next five years, we are committed to creating $500 million in new capital investment from private companies across Rankin County, so that's existing companies looking to grow and expand, making sure they invest their next dollars in Rankin County, and then also working to recruit new companies to the community. Now, don't be skewed, Avio really skewed that number with $6 billion, $500 million is a substantial amount of money. Look at Ergon's headquarters expansion, about a $90 million investment, Manasha was $80 million. So, those type of projects is what we'll be chasing and working across the next five years, and well beyond that, but the next five years, that's what we'll be focused on for our organization. Ultimately, creating 1,000 new jobs for our community, that leads to about a $50 million of new annual payroll across Rankin County. The other three items across on the right side of your screen, ultimately, these are proactive efforts for how we're getting out there, making sure that people are very familiar with the Rankin County message, making sure that Rankin County is at the top of the options for whenever a company's evaluating where to put that next dollar. Workforce development, obviously, we cannot win projects, we can't secure projects unless we have a workforce story that goes well for private companies, and that's exactly what we're doing with these metrics right here. Ultimately, we'll work to secure $500,000 for workforce training programs, and ultimately support over 200 job placements for additional residents that come to us, so that's what we do with our partners, across our workforce partners with Accelerate Mississippi, and then ultimately, we work closely with our high school students across all of Rankin County as well. Site development, this is another one I'm extremely excited about, we currently have three good industrial sites across Rankin County, we have the site here in Brandon, the East Metro Center, we have a site in Pearl, which is newer for us, the West Rankin Industrial Site, and then we've got a new site in Florence. But ultimately, if we want to respond well to companies, we've got to have about three to four additional industrial sites in our portfolio, ranging anywhere from 50 acres to 500 acres. Right now, we don't have that in our portfolio. So, through Momentum 2030, we're looking to add four new industrial sites across our community, and ultimately, we'll look all across the community, but obviously, along major corridors, along major infrastructure corridors, as natural as those sites will be, and ultimately, we'll work to secure $10 million in site development grants. Site development takes a long time, it's expensive, but ultimately, that's what we're committed to doing through Momentum 2030. We already do legislative advocacy, we've never really formalized it, but ultimately, we're getting much more aggressive in how we combat and how we go work with our legislative partners at the federal and state level in a more cohesive manner, so that's what we're doing with legislative advocacy here. And one item that we need to tout, one thing that we need to do a better job of, is working with our military installations across Rankin County. We've got some very strong military installations in Rankin County, we need to make sure that we've got a good story to tell, and then also can work with military spouses, and also that transitioning workforce coming out of those military branches. If you look at what's at the airport, as long as also what's at the maintenance facility here, we've got to make sure we keep those workers here in Rankin County whenever they're exiting out of the military, so that's what we'll do with legislative advocacy. And then, two things, or one thing that's new for us, and we're already starting this in January, you'll be getting an invitation for this, is just a legislative forum. So, twice annually, we'll be doing a legislative forum with our elected officials at the state level, so our senators and representatives, just talking about what's forthcoming in the upcoming session, and then ultimately, we'll bring them back in April, talk about what they actually accomplished. So, we'll do different groups to before session and then after session. And then tourism, one thing I think the mayor is extremely interested in, I'm sure y'all are very interested in, right now, you've got the city of Flowood who's doing a very good job with tourism, city of Brandon, city of Pearl, but nobody is doing that with a cohesive message across Rankin County. Nobody's doing a targeted message for our potential visitors from Slidell, or Mobile, or Birmingham, or many other markets, talking about what you can do in Pilahatchie, or Brandon, or Pearl, or Flowood, or many other areas. Ultimately, what we'll do is not to replace anybody at any city, is to make sure we have a cohesive brand across all of Rankin County, that way, whenever somebody's coming for a visit, they don't think just about Brandon, they don't think about just about Flowood, they think about all of the options across Rankin County. That's ultimately what we're doing with tourism, and we also want to make sure we've got high quality assets, whether it's the reservoir, we need to make sure that we're promoting things in our community properly. Right now, we've probably not done a good job of it across Rankin County, but that's what we'll do with the tourism aspect right here as well. So, why this is needed, I think the next slide will shock you, when you compare our budget numbers to our peers from the private side, if you look at our peer organizations, well, we'll start with Rankin First right now, right now, we are publicly funded at 96% from the, 96% from the public side, that means we get about 4% from the private side. If you look at our peer organizations, these are regions that are peers in the state specifically, Golden Triangle over in the Starkville area, Columbus area, they're around 34, 35% privately funded. If you look at Greater Hattiesburg ADP, they're probably skewed a little too high, but they're about 67, 66% privately funded. And ultimately, what that does, that shows to our elected officials across the community that our business community is fully bought in to economic development, they need to make sure that we've got pro-growth strategies at every level of our local government, and ultimately, that's what we're trying to get as an organization, is trying to make sure that our elected officials and our business community is fully bought into economic development, and helping steer economic development for our overall community. So, with Momentum 2030, where we're trying to get with our private side is just a 15%. It's a very achievable number, we're trying to raise $1.5 million over the next five years, that contributes $300,000 to our annual budget, and ultimately, what that does, as I said already, it shows to other businesses and to our elected officials that our business community is fully bought in, but it also shows, it helps us as a capacity aspect for our organization. Right now, we just have three staff members, we have an administrator, and then we've got two people doing economic development every day, so this is one item to help bolster our budget as our organization. So, right now, across Rankin County, we are meeting every single day with private businesses trying to fundraise this goal, it's a very achievable goal, we have a goal to be at 50% before the end of the year, and then completed with Momentum 2030, our capital campaign before Q1 of 2026, and ultimately, what that does, it allows us to more fully focus on executing on those five key focus areas every single day. And ultimately, what this helps us do, it moves us from a reactive position to a more proactive position, I've already mentioned multiple of these, but it ultimately strengthens our overall business climate for our community, and ultimately, makes sure that the Rankin First strategy is implemented across every sector of our community, working with our elected officials. You'll see the investment levels on the right-hand side there, we already do have companies committed at the platinum level, so that is essentially over five years, don't let those numbers scare you, that is over five years, we do have companies committed at platinum. I hope somebody comes in at diamond, I don't know if any private companies will come in at diamond, that will, that's more reserved for our elected officials and the municipalities right there. I'm very proud of the campaign cabinet we've also put together as well to support us here, we've got very strong support from our supervisors, very strong support from our cities, as well as our Board of Directors, but to make sure that we have full bandwidth across all the key industries across Rankin County, we've assembled this campaign cabinet, and you'll see it's not just people from Rankin County, it's also people from across the metro, but we have real estate representation here, we have healthcare representation here, as well as financial services, as well as the industrial sector. So, we've got a very strong campaign cabinet who is fully committed to economic development. So we've got a very strong campaign cabinet who is fully committed to economic development, who's helping us raise these funds for Rankin First and for the betterment of Rankin County. So I just compressed a 25-minute presentation into about 12 minutes. I can answer any questions that y'all may have about Momentum 2030 or about Rankin First in general.
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I know you've got a handout you want to give them.
I do.
And Board, I want to tell you, if you'll go back to that slide, so you know, in my time, I've spent time in three energy power plants, including a nuclear plant. I spent a lot of time rescue and hazmat training in Mississippi power plants. Been in Jackson County, First Chemical, Ingalls, and everywhere else. And when you look at Golden Triangle, I can't count the number of trips that we made to Golden Triangle. So when he starts speaking in terms of why, and I understand geography has a lot to do with it. Let's not be naive. You know, you've got the Mississippi River over here for Vicksburg and Greenville. You've got Tom Bigby Waterway up there for Echo Nobel and that kind of stuff. I think I knew all, had all those guys for supper one night in that plant. It's just, you know, and then you've got the coast. But we here in central Mississippi have a workforce. We have two interstates. We have a lot going for Rankin County. And I like the numbers that Mr. Arlene Rhodes shows, and I shared those with the board as far as ad valorem tax revenue. Rankin County is number four behind De Soto, Harrison, Jackson, and then Rankin County. So, you know, we're doing it, but this takes us to another level, and it's a recognition of somebody else has been doing this. And I appreciate you taking the bull by the horns and beginning to move us in that direction. So thank you again for coming tonight. You might hear a couple of interesting things if you want to hang around, but don't feel like you have to.
I'll stick around for a few moments, but my wife does have two very young babies at home.
You can set that right back down there. There we go. All right. All right, so let's see here. Which way are we going here? There we go. All right, so how do you want this to play, Rick? Right here? Do whatever you want to do, all right? Another outstanding, I think most everybody on the board appreciates where we are because they understand where we came from in social media, web presence, and media, and consummate professionals. And we appreciate you working with us over the last year. So we arrive at a point in time where we're one-year anniversary, and they want to share some thoughts and go from there. So floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. We visited with y'all a few months ago and showed you some of the results we had up to that point. Let me just say what you're going to see from Sabrina, who does all this work. I just do stuff like this and talk for a minute while then she takes over and talks about all the stuff she's done that I try to take credit for. In 1984, I sold billboards for a living. And I learned quickly that if you wanted to make sure that you kept selling them, whoever the store owner was, I always found out where they lived. And I would place at least three billboards on their way to work and on their way home from work. And they would always tell me, "Those billboards are all over the place. They've got to be working great." No, they weren't really. They were just on their way to work and on their way back from work. And that was kind of the only way we used to be able to measure. You know, when we would meet with the client, we'd say, "We like this full-page ad. We're going to run it in the Clarion Ledger. How do you feel about it?" They'd go, "We like it too." And then we'd say, "I think it'll work." And then we'd say, "I think it worked," and that was the end of it. In the last 10 years or so, all that has changed. There's no feeling that something worked anymore. Now, we have analytic reports, which Sabrina's going to share with you, that show down to the second the time somebody comes in on your website, how long they stay, what they click on, the first thing that makes them click off, every social media visit, every social media publishing. The thing you will hear over and over is advertising value equivalency, AVE, which means, take for instance, one of the widest-covered stories we did was the 100th concert at the amphitheater. Now, the difference in between the two things we're talking about is we could have gone to the mayor and say, "Hey, we need to do an ad campaign and run this on the 6 o'clock news to let everybody know that this is our 100th concert." And so if we ran an ad on WLBT 6 o'clock news, that would have been $1,200 for that ad. The difference is, through public relations, we get them interested and they run the story themselves. And instead of 30 seconds, they do two and a half minutes. And that two and a half minutes has a bigger value because they're saying something good about us instead of us saying something about ourselves. And so we've got an industry-standard software program that tracks everything we do like that. And based on where we are, how much media cost, things like that, it gives a value for everything we do. And so none of what Sabrina's about to go over with you is our opinion of what we think it's worth. All of this is based on what industry standards say that everything we've done is worth, or would have been, would have the same amount it would have cost you from advertising dollars out of your own pocket versus what we've been able to do through social media and public relations. So with that, I'll let her do all the hard work.
First of all, thank you guys for letting us come and talk to you again today. It's been a while, but it's nice to see some friendly faces in the room. You know, I work with some of the department heads throughout the month, each month, and you guys do a great job of getting us the information that we need in a timely manner. So to start off, I want to highlight some of our social media performance metrics from May through November. The last time we were in here was April, and that time, we covered metrics from the beginning of December, where we picked up work for you guys through that point in April. So since that time, some of the things that have improved, which you see a lot of green numbers up there, which is great, and we don't see very often with our clients, because the nature of social media is very thickle. I'm sure you guys have your own accounts, whether it be Facebook or Instagram, and you know that attention spans are hard to capture. And one thing that I think that the city of Brandon does a great job of is highlighting all of its events, highlighting things going on, and then you guys giving us the power to go out and actually capture that and share it online for community members and people to see and interact with. So just off the top right there is 46% increase in engagement. So that's for that entire time period from May through November, which is really great to see on the city's page. Again, we started these pages back at the beginning of December last year. Excuse me, I had pneumonia a few weeks ago and it's still hanging around. But it's great to see from the beginning of December, this much improvement on pages that are brand-new with just one year. Another thing I want to point out is, I believe that says a 64% increase in video views. Video is highly targeted. It's highly effective on social media. Most everybody only pays attention to video because it takes at least seven seconds of video to get someone's attention. With a graphic, most people keep on scrolling unless it's something important like community news or some kind of traffic incident or things like that, that are just things that people need to know on social media. So really great metrics when it comes to the type of content that we're sharing. Looking at the entire time period since we've taken over the social media metrics, again, these pages were new, so of course, there's going to be green metrics there for all of the increases. But the one thing I want to point out on this slide is the 3 million impressions number, because that's going to lead us into the calculation for what brings us to our advertising value equivalency for social media. So you take that total reach, you multiply it by the industry standard cost per impression, which for a municipality is typically around $1.16. That's the cost it would take to place an ad for one singular impression to reach your audience. The quality factor is industry standard for a type of municipality, for any type of industry. So every industry has a zero-to-one rating, and a municipality is at .9. So we take that entire calculation together, and that gives you the advertising value equivalency of $3.2 million. So that's how much advertising you would have had to have paid for to get the same amount of coverage that you got on social media. Going into the public relations side, Rick has kind of already spoiled a little bit of what I was excited to talk about here. But for the total time that we've taken with you guys to really work on pushing out key messages for the city, and not just your normal announcements, like there's a traffic incident here or things like that. As Rick stated, we've focused really heavily on trying to promote the best aspects of the city, so looking for really important storytelling moments, and one of those just happens to be the Brandon Amphitheater's 100th show, and that's on the next slide. But since May, we have been able to drive over $131 million in total potential news reach. And that equates to an advertising value equivalency of, I think that says 4.9 million. Sorry, my eyesight is really bad tonight. On the Brandon Amphitheater specifically, all of the coverage that we did on the feature stories that we wrote and distributed, you can see some of the different news networks that picked it up and shared it. One of the most impactful ones was Yahoo News. The music industry is very supportive of the Brandon Amphitheater, so being able to put out that positive news really helped us in news coverage there with over $121 million in potential news reach and over $4.5 million in advertising value equivalency. We also have the Avio digital announcement here, which reached 1.9 million in potential news reach. That's how many people may have seen the content or did see the content from the different publications that shared that news. And this is positive news coverage. We did filter out to positive only because it was an entire county thing. So we wanted to filter between positive and also city of Brandon mentions. Talking about advertising value equivalency there, again, that metric rose out to be $71,000 in advertising value. Looking at our website traffic impact during the time period that we have been measuring since May, 56,000 active users, 53,000 of which are new users to the site. And I think the most important thing on this page to look at is most of our traffic is being driven by organic search, which means when we redid the website for you guys, one of the things we focused on heavily was search engine optimization, being able to filter the keywords that are on the website so that when people search for Brandon-related keywords like "events near me," "events in Brandon," or whatever that may be, that people are driven to the city's website. So seeing that organic searches at the top right there is really great. And then also seeing that the highest number of page counts for views goes to the landing page is also great. On the creative side, I did just want to touch on some of the things that we've been working on, both in the past year and since May. One of those I mentioned earlier is video. We've worked with several of the departments to work on economic development videos, like you see on that first one on the top left. That is a highlight video of a grand opening of a nail salon. We also have the police department featured on here. We did a very viral video talking about the golf cart ordinance. We also have 042 nights with Main Street, and then also Brandon High School, talking about some of the kids who signed college, who signed to play college sports, which I thought was a really great way to kind of mix it up and get the community involved as well. So really, just with all of our video stuff, focusing on things that people want to see from the city, which is both a mix of events, a mix of new businesses coming to the area, kind of personalizing it as well by giving interviews with some of the business owners, interviews with several of the people who work within the city so that people know a face whenever they see a city official, things like that. But really important to focus on moving forward is video. Looking at some of the different creative pieces that we've worked on since May, of course, we've done social media graphics galore. We've also developed some Christmas graphics, some Christmas branding to kind of brand all of the Christmas events going on across the city. And we've partnered with Main Street to kind of make sure that all of that gets promoted in one way so that we have one voice moving forward through the Christmas season. We've also developed poll banners for downtown. We've done posters for the various events that get hung up around the city, and then also shared online on social media. And then we've also partnered with the police department to share their monthly crime stats. Some things that I want to make sure you guys take away from this, and then some recommendations, kind of moving forward of where we would like to go. We really want to prioritize the high-performing content that we've been working on throughout this entire year, which is video. So that means we're going to continue developing video, whether it be at events or with the different departments. Maybe it's highlighting more FAQs that people want to see on the pages, things like that, just to deliver that strong engagement and continue to grow the pages. We also want to leverage and build brand loyalty, so we've developed that foundation of who Brandon is and what different things are available within the city. But now, we want to really engage that audience and start getting our audience to talk great about us. That's where you get the brand loyalty there, and you start to really grow on social media. We want to maximize the earned media opportunities. Nothing to really change here. Just keep thinking about all of the great things that the city of Brandon has going on that we can continue to build off of when it comes to any kind of news coverage. And then also aligning the coverage with what the community actually wants to see. Community reacts really well to any of the videos that we've done. They've reacted really well to the live event coverage, to any of the recaps, things like that. So making sure that what we post online is what people actually want to see. And then finally, just to kind of give you a recap here, so AVE is something that's extremely important to our clients. And again, that's the advertising value equivalency, because from a PR and social media perspective, it is really hard to quantify what you're getting in return, but this number gives you that. Total AVE for everything that we've done, social and public relations combined, is 8.1 million. I think that number really speaks for itself. It's not something that I see often with any of my clients. And I think Rick can definitely speak to that as well. But it's because you guys have done such a great job of letting us be creative and letting us kind of take the reins in what we do to promote the city, and I commend you for that.
Before you ask a question, I'll speak to that real quickly. We do not have a client in the last 10 years that has achieved any of these numbers. I'm talking about clients that spend millions of dollars a year with us. And some of theirs is much more specialized products, and they don't have as big an audience. But this percentage and this number outpaces any of our clients by a factor of at least two. And so it has been great to watch, and thank you all for letting us do what we do and giving us the creative license and freedom to tell your story. We met with several of you a year ago and asked you what you thought was most important about the city, what you thought was most important about our message. And we told you then, and we tell you now, our main job here is to promote and protect the brand, and that's the brand of Brandon. So with that, we'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and I'm sure that that's being extended again as we move into the next year, subject to the will of the board, to sit down again and have a personal recap or other observations and thoughts and things like that.
Yeah, especially now that you see what we do and how we do it, and there's examples out there. Instead of us just telling you what we think you'll do, then I think you'd probably be able to give us some better feedback.
The Board asked Tracy to run those numbers. I provided those to you as to what was spent over the last year. You know, I'm a big value guy, getting the value of what we need, and he's got a handout he's going to give you. But Tracy ran those numbers, and Rick and I spent quite a bit of time talking. It'd be easier on us and easier on them if we just did level billing all the way across, no increase in price or anything else. But they're always available. I can tell you, I lean on them a lot, and I feed a lot of content to them, and I get our department heads to feed a lot of content to them. Most recent was the app from Energy, you know, that should be out there, you know, Lickety Split. But they are a phone call away, very receptive, and can address things in a private manner that, you know, we've, for two and a half weeks now, we've been going back and forth on a couple of things, and finally arrived at a point in concert with legal counsel to say, "You know, we don't need to be out there talking about this in front of a camera. We need to issue a written statement and let that stand for itself." And it's those types of things, those long discussions where professionalism really comes into play of, you know, if you say the wrong thing at the wrong time and the wrong person, it can cost you. And they're there to protect us. I think they've done a great job. And I think some of the successes we're seeing around Brandon of driving people to downtown, driving people to our parks, driving people to look at housing here, I mean, I had a man sitting out front this morning, said, "I came here, I came to Brandon today to buy a house." Sitting right out front this morning. So, you know, I think they're doing a great job. So I would encourage you, I did put it in, Rick, I did put it in the agenda for them to consider and vote on if they're willing to do that tonight, to level that out, and just want to make sure that everybody understands there's no increase in what's been done. And we really appreciate it. We really appreciate your responsiveness, and you've taken us to a different plateau. Now, just like the Veterans Day Program Board, hope you enjoy that. It's not a problem. But when you do something like that, you take it to another level, then the expectation is you're going to do that or you're going to exceed it. So I'm going to look at you and say the same thing. I'm going to look to the Board, I'm going to speak for the Board and say, "If we do this again for another year in this context, we look to exceed what we've done."
Sir, and I will say- And I will say that we do have another program, we didn't, this could be an hour-long program but presentation. We did look at another program that identifies the cities in Mississippi that seem to be doing the best job and getting the most recognition and are having the, what I'd call the folks from higher income brackets and other things that are actually looking into cities where they want to live and work and move businesses. And we put all those metrics in, we came up with three cities, just to see where Brandon stood. And actually, Brandon's in the top three, and that is Oxford, Ocean Springs, and Brandon. So you see, you kind of got the north, the middle, and the south. And I think Brandon richly deserves to be there and we're doing everything we can to keep that going. So thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Quality. Appreciate quality. All right, board, you might want to sit around with Ben. Come on up, there's an iPad there with your name on it. So, met Ben at Small Town Conference and he's got a gizmo, for lack of a better phrase, that we're going to play with. He's got some examples. Now, over 4,000 calls really, do I know? 5,000 frequency per week go to our answering service, you know, all hours of the night. So for me, it's two things, and I've discussed this with Ben, thank you for coming tonight. How do we reduce that number down? Because if we reduce that number down, we're paying them an average, I forget it, you told me the average 69 cents a call is what that's costing us to go to the answering service. So if there's some way to reduce that and make our workforce in this office more efficient, where they're not answering, no call from the public is mundane. Say that very clearly, no call. It doesn't matter what, you know, when are we going to celebrate Halloween? Okay? That's an important person making that call. I get it. It's going to be Halloween. But we answer these things and burn up a lot of phone time on it. I mean, I can't tell you the number of calls that Georgiana takes in the office up there and she'll refer, yes, she'll sit there for, you know, 20, 30 seconds listening to it and say, yes, ma'am, you really need to go to the police department with that and we'll get them hooked up and go to the police. But that's constantly going on with city phones. Water Department, Public Works, Community Development, Fire, Police, not so much, but primarily Public Works and Community Development is just, and the mayor, that's all she does sometimes, sit there and answer the phone. If we can figure out a way to automate that with a phone tree, with a voice, how can I help you, Mr. Baker? You need to know how big a fence needs to be in your backyard? Well, looking at ordinances, it's this, blah, 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 and answer that question for you. So it doesn't have to go to a person, it can go to AI. So that's what I brought him to show you, and I'm looking from an efficiency and a money perspective of how we might be able to use this technology. I'll say that okay.
No, that's great.
Floor's yours.
Awesome. Well, thanks for having me, everybody. Ben Bushing. And yeah, so I know when it comes to just the world we're in today, you probably don't hear a lot about AI technology. But no, we go to these government conferences and, you know, there's AI all over the place, right? So everyone's trying to pivot towards AI and how can that help your business? So one thing really cool about Polymorphic is we are 100% municipality-focused. So we're working with local cities, local counties, and essentially, how can we make AI practical for cities and counties? And the use cases just continue to grow. So we'd love to just walk through some of the use cases. Mayor was really gracious to spend some time with us as well as invite some of the department heads just to kind of talk through some different concepts over, you know, not only frequently asked questions, but just opportunities where we can find efficiency. And not just on the voice side, but on the backend as well, you know? What might be just some paper processes or, you know, some old slow-moving processes that could kind of be sped up within technology and allow you oversight and data on that as well? So we kind of start out talking about the problem and kind of where the constituent expectations are. And, you know, it's just iPhone rates and Android and whatever have increased. You've got the Amazons of the world, you've got the Domino's Pizza tracker, right? Along with all those great, you know, leaps of technology, the expectations change. So, you know, we kind of make the joke that if you go to the local car dealer, you know, and you have a bad experience, you're not saying, hey, I wish you guys operated more like my local government. You know, you may tell them you wish they operated more like Chick-fil-A or something like that, but why not local government? And a lot of that is just due to the wide range of volume of everything that you guys handle. You don't really know what's coming in and what department that needs to go to. But we're having conversations with, say, a city clerk that's spending 70% of the phone, of the day on the phone answering the same frequently asked questions. So just an example of like, where can we either quickly answer those calls or direct them to the right department, or even give an option to bring them online or send them a text message or email? Like, let the constituents interact with you the way they prefer. So the way that Polymorphic wants to exist is to essentially be an ecosystem that's going to be a customer service avenue for everything you're doing. With that said, we kind of use this particular example, which I think you talked about a fence permit, right? So I want to build a fence in my backyard. Do I need a permit? So what do I do, you know, as a citizen of Brandon? And I might start with the website, right? So start on the website, I'm trying to figure out, oh, what department do I need to go to for this? I kind of might poke around. Okay, I'm just going to call somebody. So I call somebody, you know, in some cases, you're going to a phone tree, you don't exactly know what button to press to get to the right department, but then you might actually talk to a person and are they going to be the one to solve your problem on that call? So really what we try to do is give real-time personal answers despite the avenue that they're reaching out to you guys. So on the website, it could be AI search and chat. So you've got a little, you know, how can I help at the bottom, right? Being able to ask a question to that and get anywhere you need to in the website in two clicks or less. So one of our biggest goals is to make every city and county we work with a two-click city. When it comes to the AI-powered phone, which that's kind of, you know, there's a lot of chatbots out there, but when it comes to the voice technology, we've really got a sophisticated product. So getting to an automated agent on the phone that's able to either give you a quick answer on a frequently asked question or direct you to the right department or even triage your request. We're going to talk about leaf pickup is something we built out, is a quick request for you guys, whether it be through web or phone. And then from there, which we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on, but just with Mayor and his staff, we talked about just several different workflow use cases when it comes to everything from permitting to different public work project. How can we streamline those within the systems that you guys are already using, but enable, you know, front-end forms, whether it be by voice, whether it be by text message, or even through the website? So how can we quickly run information through the avenues that you already have, but also expedite and give you data on all these things as well? On top of that, we're able to integrate GIS data. So you think about, you know, some of these questions are going to be very generalized to just the city as a whole, right? But what about questions like, when is my trash day? You know, it might be Monday and Thursday for, you know, one particular district, but it might be Tuesday or Friday for another district. And then how do holidays affect those? And how can you ensure you're getting the right answer to really those easy questions, but without having to have a human touch? Where's my polling location? You know, that was a pretty frequent one we had here recently. How do I start a renovation? And the list really goes on from there. I'm going to hop into some of the live demos, we've kind of given it a play. Some of these are fun. One thing, one piece of feedback we did get, when I first started with Polymorphic, to back up, they didn't, they kind of had a hole here in the southeast. We had a lot of customers in Florida, North Carolina, and we're actually growing in Alabama as well. So they decided to find, you know, AI nerd in Mississippi who could speak the language, but go out and, you know, look at what's the, you know, what's the taste for this market here? So one of the first things I asked is like, we got to get some more southern voices in here because we have a wide range of different voices. So I did get some feedback on one of the voices we tried out was a little bit too southern, maybe for Brandon. Some of our cities do like the voice, I will say that. But anyways, we'll play around with some of the different accents and kind of show you guys some of the practical examples. So I'm going to hop into that. Hopefully, in terms of running this over speakerphone, it's going to work all right. But let's, let's give this a try here real quick.
You've reached the automated attendant for the city of Brandon on a recorded line. How may we serve you?
Hey, I want to know who my alderman is.
Thank you for your question. I'll look up information about your alderman. Could you please provide your address so I can find the correct alderman for your location?
Yeah, it's 36 Pebble Hill Drive, Brandon, Mississippi. Can you hear me? 36 Pebble Drive, Brandon, Mississippi.
Thank you for confirming your address. I'll look up who the alderman is for 36 Pebble Drive, Brandon, Mississippi. Please hold one moment while I get that information for you. The address 36 Pebble Drive, Brandon, Mississippi is in Ward 3. The alderman for Ward 3 is Harry Williams. Would you like his contact information or do you have any other questions about your ward or city services?
So I'm going to, I'm going to keep running through the voices. I'm going to play a few more here.
This is Brandy, the automated attendant for the city of Brandon on a recorded line. How may we serve you?
Hey, what kind of Christmas events do you guys have this year?
Thank you for your question. Let me look up information about Christmas events happening in Brandon this year. One moment while I find the details for you. Brandon is hosting its annual Christmas parade on Friday, December 12th at 5:00 PM in historic downtown. The parade brings the community together with colorful floats, candy, and beads for everyone to enjoy. There's also a holiday open house at City.
So the list goes on in that one. Let's see, got a couple of more examples here. Yeah, let's do this one.
This is the automated attendant for Brandon on a recorded line. How may we serve you?
Hey, my neighbor's been working on his roof for like three or four months. He's got this ugly blue tarp on his roof. I'm just really upset, I don't know what to do.
Thank you for letting me know about your concern. I understand how frustrating that situation can be, and I'm looking up information about property maintenance and code enforcement for you right now. May I ask for the address of the property in question so I can provide the most accurate guidance or connect you with the right department?
Yeah, it's 106 Fern Valley, Brandon, Mississippi.
Thank you for providing the address. Based on city code, exterior surfaces must be free of holes or damaged material that lets in rain, and outdoor items should be stored out of view or screened from neighbors. If you believe your neighbor's property is in violation, you can contact the Community Development Office for code enforcement. Would you like me to text you a link with more details on property maintenance?
So another example right there. Jumping into just a couple more practical, I don't want to, want to keep you guys all night, but here's a couple of other frequently asked questions we were asked about.
You've reached the automated attendant for the city of Brandon on a recorded line. How may we serve you?
Hey, can I burn leaves in my yard?
Thank you for your question. Let me look up the information about burning leaves in your yard for the city of Brandon. One moment, please. Yes, you may burn small piles of limbs and leaves in your yard within the city limits of Brandon, but there are some important conditions. Before burning, you must call the Brandon Fire Department Central Station to get approval, and you should have a garden hose at the burn site. Only natural materials like limbs and leaves are allowed, no man-made materials or trash. Would you like more details or need the phone number for the fire department?
No, but can the fire department come to my son's birthday party? It's next week.
Thank you for your question. Let me check if the Brandon Fire Department offers visits or appearances for birthday parties and how you can request that service. One moment, please. The Brandon Fire Department does not visit private homes for birthday parties. However, you are welcome to bring your child and guests to tour the fire station. Just call the central station to find out which station is closest and to schedule your visit. Would you like the phone number or more details on how to arrange a tour?
No, one more question. I've got a big pile of leaves I'm about to rake up. How do I get, can you guys pick up my leaves? I don't want to burn them anymore.
Thank you for asking about leaf pickup. Let me get the details on how you can have your leaves collected by the city. One moment, please. Yes, the city of Brandon offers curbside leaf pickup. To get your leaves collected, you need to rake them into a tight pile two to 10 feet from the curb, making sure there are no limbs, rocks, or other debris mixed in. You can request pickup by calling the city, emailing, or submitting a request online. Would you like me to text you the link or details on how to request leaf pickup? Thank you for calling. If you need anything else in the future...
So anyways, on that one, she could send me a text message. There's also a prompt where we can actually put that in audibly as well. So, you know, there's several different ways that we do work with cities, you know? A lot of times, we're just trying to get them to the right department very quickly. Other times, you know, they want to automate certain systems, either point them to the website or point them to a form through text message. One of the things we did build with you guys was a workflow tracker, and essentially, it was just that within Leaf Pickup. So, you know, essentially, like a simple form like that was as easy as name, email, address, and phone number. Not only does it stop there, but it actually goes into your workflow to where I think you guys have like seven to 10 days, you want to be able to pick those up. It's got a process to actually go out to those to dispatch. If they're not able to pick them up for some reason, let's say the pile's just full of, you know, a bunch of junk or something like that, they can actually take a picture there on their text message, update that with a ticket, that's actually going to email back to the constituent as well to actually not only give them a reason, but a photo, you know, hey, this is why your leaves weren't picked up. And that's kind of like a small concept of what we call the Domino's Pizza Tracker. So that was one little quick example that we did build for you guys. And yeah, I think, yeah, I had one other that Mayor did mention, I wanted to just show how many accents we have.
Happy Veterans Day. This is General Louis Wilson with the city of Brandon on a recorded line. How may we serve you?
Hey, what do you have going on for Veterans Day?
Thank you for your question. Let me check for information about Veterans Day events or activities happening in Brandon. Please hold one moment while I look that up for you. Brandon holds an annual Veterans Day breakfast at the city's municipal complex.
So there was also like a witch on Halloween that some people had, like as a funny greeting. I know there will be like a Santa Claus around Christmas as well. So it's like, it's one of those things that you can have fun with it, some cities do. And essentially, at the end of the day, it's one of those things that typically, when we look at rollout, we try to look into a phased approach. Like typically, the chatbot on the website is going to be one of the first things we roll out to try to get you guys into a two-click city. And then from the answering service, you know, there are times we do random rollouts where it doesn't answer everyone, and then we kind of collect feedback. We can answer all calls and then measure from there as well as incorporate after-hours too. So one of the things we kind of talked about after, you know, going through a few meetings with Mayor and his staff, was looking at basically a 90-day pilot to, like I said, quickly implement the chat function, implement the workflow for Leaf Pickup as well, because I think that is either... I think that is either already started or is about to start. So really, some low-hanging fruit, just through an hour of us setting up demo. We set up all that technology you guys saw tonight. And then from there, look at implementing voice agents for FAQs, triages, and transfers, and then really dig in on the discovery, on some of the workflows that we talked about, everything from public works to permitting, even event services. We're using a lot of our workflow in that aspect, because there's so many different parameters when it comes to event planning, and, you know, depending on the size of the event, fire and PD may have to be involved. If there's alcohol served, you know, there's other forms and things that have to be filled out. So we've got a lot of use cases we've done on that end as well. And then from there, even during the pilot, we would be looking at bi-weekly meetings with a dedicated customer service representative to where they're essentially tracking and measuring, you know, the volume of calls, the volume of website, how those are being handled, and then just gathering feedback. But with that said, we typically see about 6.42 months in terms of average time on ROI from our users. So we are truly looking at solving a problem, giving time back to your employees, but also giving a better and quicker, you know, answering service to constituents, who just want to get in and out and get that quick and easy answer. So I think from there, that's all I've got as far as that. We had a couple of examples of what two different pilot programs would look like, but yeah, not sure where you want to take it from here, Mayor.
Uh, just expose them to it. Just because it's free doesn't mean it's of interest to me, but it is, I see a use. So our answering service now, I can get a PDF file of all the calls for a month. I can't get that sorted. So when I look at Alex and I go, I want to know how many grinder pumps that our guys had to respond to in the last month. There's no way to get that. The analytics of this, you can get that. So I can tell you, these two guys right here are really jazzed up about this. They see it as immediate assistance to them and what they're trying to do. So I really think it's worth a 90-day free trial, just to look at it and see what kind of feedback and analytics of it. And you'll be working on all five of these people and events Charles behind you, but just need to move quick. So board, if you're in agreement, if you would think about this, you don't have to decide right now, or you can decide tonight. If you're in agreement that we can do a 90-day free trial and take a shot at it, I think you got a guy here that's willing to work with us to make that happen. Okay? So appreciate you coming tonight, Ben.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Y'all got any questions?
I've been asking your AI this whole entire time, so yeah, have fun with it.
Projects, all right. I started to do this again, I just narrowed it down to, I've got one spreadsheet, I'm gonna work it through. If you want to stand up and stretch, board, you've been sitting here for an hour, or anybody else, you want to stand up for a minute, because I'm gonna breeze through the 17 things I got out, I'm just gonna talk about them. I don't have slides on them all. If you want to stand up, stretch your back, please do. Not gonna slow down. So I felt like I need to give us feedback on where things are. We've approved a lot of projects, we haven't gotten started on them, but I need to tell you where they are. Matthew, still in the room, right?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm talking about. All right, so Alex and many times Joey and Matthew and I, and a lot of times Tracy, will spend, I don't know, two hours, four hours a week, working through projects and how we're gonna fund them and all that kind of stuff. So first one is the North Hill subdivision, that was CDVG. It is a project that cost somewhere around $900,000, $80,000. We're about a month away from getting it out to bid. They've got a hung-up hydro line in there, I think, they've got to dig out, and that's gonna start tomorrow, working on that. So I'd be interested, Tim, if you're listing pictures of that. That's also getting rid of a lift station on North Street. Number two, street improvements, Heights Drive, that's how it here in front. Just to remind everybody, we did do an agreement with Trustmark when they bought that four acres, that we'd put a street all the way through to the police department. We didn't know at the time that the street by the police department was not owned by the city, it was owned by Energy. So we had to go through about a year and two, four months to get control of that property, but we have that now. I think it'd be good to go ahead and put storm drains in, curbs, gutters, and base cores. We've talked about that, we'd like to put that out for bid and go ahead and get that in. I think that would help keep mud off of Highway 80 and just make a better workplace for everybody. So we'd like to bid that. Uh, like to try, I don't know when we could open those bids, but if you say go on it, we'll put a bid package together and get it advertised. Number three, Felicity Street, that's been around for a while, we've added some more to it. That's Felicity Street, the entrance now to that parking lot, it is an ADA parking spot and access to the sidewalk in front of the county building and a little wall in the back. I didn't put those pictures in here. There it is. That would be funded by, let's see, the 2021 Senate Bill 2948. We've got about $95,000 left there, and whatever else would come out of our Infrastructure Modernization Act, but we'd like to get that out there and get it going. And you've already approved that one. So stormwater improvements in Afton Drive and Rain Tree, that's looking like somewhere between $180,000 and $200,000 fix. We'll see how well that goes. That's also Infrastructure Modernization Act money, which by the way, we have as of today, $727,854.12 in that fund. So you're gonna hear me mention that a couple of times going through here. Number five, sidewalk installation on Marquette Road, that is a most grant. Looks like it will cost somewhere around $225,000. That is, we've got $85,000 left in that grant, and the remainder of that will come out of the 2% fund. The Highway 18 water line, hadn't seen a lot of that, because we're trying, what we're trying to do is eat up the rest of the money, which has to be exhausted by January of next year, or the end of the year, end of 2026. We've got a little bit of money left in the ARPA money, or as it's called internally, the MCWI money remaining. We think that job will cost somewhere around a million plus. But again, you don't know until you open the bids. And we have 300, right at $400,000 left in the MCWI money to put toward that. The rest of that money would come out of our enterprise fund. Number seven, sewer line and camera clean, we've already approved that, West Rankin bid that, and we've already, they already, we, they have already awarded that. Remember, we had 500-something thousand in there, that bid came in at $237, $375. So that means we have a remaining $287,000. And I would pose that when we find a bunch of problems, which we're gonna find a bunch of problems, that we break them up into bids and we use the rest of that money to fix those problems, rather than using our money. That's bond money left over from the plant when it was built. Number eight, sidewalk installation on Kennedy Farm Parkway, will use the remainder of House Bill 603. We've already given them a notice to proceed. That's $175,693. We'll, we've got $91,000 left out of that House bill, and we'll fund the rest of that with 2% money, which means about half of it, that'll turn into a 50-50 type thing. Water well at Brandon Fire Station, we made application for that, that's 1.95% money on a 20-year note. Very common, we've done that many times. Number 10, Phase 2 for City Hall. Now that Phase 1 is done, we'd like to look at a couple of things. I asked Alex to get with energy to see what it would take to put underground power into this building, instead of this power line coming around the building. And then it's storage in the back back here for our improved room over here, we need better chairs, folks. If we're gonna have, do conventions and lunches and things like that, we need an event chair rather than a concert chair, but we got to have a place to store them. And that's taking that whole back in here and turning it into storage and fixing this kitchen, which we didn't have the money to do when we built it, but putting, making it really a commercial kitchen with heater so we can serve hot meals and that kind of thing. Jamie believes that would come in somewhere around $650,000 to do all that. Don't know about the power, we'll find that out, got a meeting coming up Wednesday, we'll find out and give you some feedback on that. Number 11, stormwater improvements in Cornerstone, that's City Funding Infrastructure Modernization Act, looking like that's gonna be somewhere around $200,000, and we'd like to go ahead and get that bid. There was a big debate upstairs about whether to use the plastic pipe or whether to use concrete. Matthew has a good observation of if it's underwater, if it's got water in it, better to go with concrete. So that's probably how we're gonna go. They did a price comparison from plastic to concrete, how much difference, $500 difference between the two. The savings in that is the cost of insulation if you're using plastic pipe and stormwater. The problem in this particular location is some of it's already underwater with pond water coming back into it. So it's always gonna have water in it. So that's the reason why I asked them to go ahead and we'll get that done and get it priced with concrete. Number 12, crossover safety improvements. Matthew has, folks from MDOT, they still coming? Next board meeting, Matthew?
I had thought they would not participate.
Okay, I thought it'd be good for them to come. That's something we applied for a year before last, got it, it's a $616,000 grant. We'll pay for the rest of that, those are 75, 25. We'll pay for the rest of that out of the 2024 Senate Bill 2468, which means we'll carve out of that about $154,000. So that's a MPO, federal dollar, adding those two together. And then you've got 13, 14, 15, we made application for these on short order this year. We got notice that didn't have, had a short turnaround time, kind of like we have a short turnaround time now with MPO and the street projects that I sent out to you, but we were awarded three of those. You've got that hard copy in front of you. Those three are 13, let's see, City Park to City Hall is $1,350,000. Shallow Park around on Shallow Road to Kennedy Farm is 1.3. Grant's Ferry, Shared Path, Cornerstone, Trickle Bridge is 966. So matching these, we're gonna use the 2024 Senate Bill 2468 on all three of those. So those four things, folks, we'll be getting $4,321,093 federal dollars, and we'll be using $1,368,492 state dollars, which totals $5,689,585, and no local dollars, so no city dollars in that. So we're using some state dollars as the match to get the federal, and there's nothing out of our pocket. That's what I mean when I say leverage dollars to get dollars. Last thing on here is streets. Tried my best, we're not there yet. Hopefully, we'll have that by our next board meeting, I'll be able to share with you what our streets plan is. And a sidewalk, doing some preparatory specification work, some engineering to connect Mary Ann to Highway 80 along Louis Wilson, to see if we can't clear up that, some of that. But anyway, that would not be an MPO project, that'd be a local project, and we'd go from there. So am I missing anything there, Alex? So a lot of these are in your section tonight to bid on. Matthew, did I miss anything that I should be speaking to?
All the money has to be spent on September 26.
I'm sorry, say again?
All the money has to be spent on September 26.
By next September, okay, by September 26.
September 26, 2026.
Okay, so, and we'll have it spent if we go forward with these projects, it'll be exhausted. I think we got a spreadsheet from Tracy that had $40,000 left or something like that that Jim had calculated, but, okay. Y'all got questions on any of those right quick? Not, we'll get to work-
I think a spreadsheet would help me out with that at some point. I just saw, I saw all the projects listed there, but I can't remember all of that information in one go.
I can't either. It's just like a-
Something like that would help me.
It cups, well, and it comes, it comes quick sometimes, like today, you know, so it comes quick. So I try to keep up with it. But I'll, anytime we bid something or approve it, I'll tell you where the money's coming from. All right? Okay, here we go. Does anyone here like to make public comment tonight, talk to the board about anything? All right, no public comment, and we'll move on through the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the work session and regular board meeting minutes of November 3, 2025? Motion by Miss Sharon Womack?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thank you for listening to all that. All right, under the mayor, number one, request permission to approve two professional service agreements with Sim Spangler and Trussell LLC for an employment search to fill two open positions of code enforcement officer and building inspector. And Billy Sim doing a good job for us. Consideration to advertise the Brandon Big Room Innovations Phase 2, I generally talked about that, which includes continued renovation at City Hall to the kitchen and storage areas. Like to advertise that and see what we get back. And number three, consideration to approve a professional service agreement with CLO for web page management, monitoring of social media, media announcements, and event support on a monthly basis as a professional services rather than a contract.
Mayor, I'd like to table number three, make a motion to table number three for, until we can discuss further, please.
Okay, is there a second? Want to table that?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and second to table that one. We will strike that one. All right, so one and two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Miss Sharon Womack. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Out of curiosity, when would you like to bring that back up, talk about it? Next board meeting? When would you like to table it?
Next board meeting.
Next board meeting, okay. Okay. Just did one and two. Chris Vincent, Sharon Womack. What else you need? All right, Mayor.
Good evening. May I take these together? Number one, consideration to spread on the minutes, the receipt of payment reimbursement in the amount of $1,924 from Progressive Insurance Company for repairs to the pedestrian pole at Highway 80 at College Street due to a traffic accident which occurred on A15, 2025. Number two, consideration to approve the lowest and best quote from Singer H&R to purchase three heated cabinets for additional food storage during large events in the amount of $10,745. Another quote was received from TNC Restaurant Equip and Supply Inc. in the amount of $12,336.88. Number three, consideration to reject all bids received on the project to replace the library HVAC chiller. Board approved it on October 6, 2025, and authorized to re-advertise the project. Number four, consideration to hire Hub International to file documents, including the communication piece to clients' gag clause attestation, on behalf of the city of Brandon, and authorize the mayor to sign the documents. Number five, consideration to approve a documented claims for November 17, Fox Everett Claims released on November 18, and electronic fund transfers for October. And then number six, the monthly report of privilege license.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead. Mr. Baker's got a question.
So rejecting the bids, what do you mean the board approved it on October 6? They approved authorizing the bid?
No, authorizing the advertisement.
Okay, so no bids has ever been accepted?
That's true.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve those five items under the first? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker?
Second.
Second, Mr. David Ferris. Any further discussion, comment?
Was there a recent one that has attached it for the Fox Everett money on here on our
I attached it Friday. I'm not sure why it's not showing, but I did attach it. I forgot the amount.
Are we still in the negative?
We are at minus 2,000 if we pay all the claims. We are at minus 2,000 if we pay all the claims. But we did receive a big check from the insurance today.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Mr. David Ferris. Any further questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thank you, Ms. Marion. Sure. Yeah. The 24.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, mayor, board. Permission to take these together, item one through eight.
Hello, just split it for just a second. Do one through five and then we'll move on to the rest of them, okay?
Yes, sir. Number one, permission to advertise for bid the Highway 18 Waterline Extension Project, Star Road to West Sunset Drive. Number two, permission to advertise for bid the Marquette Road Sidewalk East Side Project. Number three, permission to advertise for bid the Heights Drive Roadway and Drainage Improvements Project. Number four, permission to advertise for bid one on-site generator for Richland Creek Lift Station. And number five, permission to develop plans and advertise for bid the Cornerstone Drive Storm Drain Pipe Replacement Project.
Thank you. Let me make a couple of notes here while you're here, too. So the first one is MCWI funding will help offset the cost of that. And then our enterprise. The second one is the remainder of the most grant. Boy, we've had two most grants that we've been successfully getting, one and two, and we haven't started on number two yet, but this will exhaust number one. And the third one is Heights, that would be City Infrastructure Modernization Act money, as will number five. And number four is enterprise money or water fund money, sewer. So that's where those funds will come from for those five projects. Is that correct, Alex?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we got one, two, three, four, five. Is there a motion to approve those five items? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Please continue.
Six through eight. Six, consideration to approve pay request five in the amount of $295,463.11 from Thornton Construction Company for the Grant's Ferry Parkway Shared Youth Use Path LPA Project, and authorized payment of the same. Number seven, consideration to approve the following regarding emergency repairs to the Great Anials Lift Station. Emergency repairs were, occurred on July 18, 2025 due to the pump failure at the lift station. The invoice amount for that repair was $5,943, authorized payment of the same. Number eight, consideration to approve the following from Edgar Contracting LLC for the Cornerstone Waterwell Power Supply Project. These items will finalize the project. Approve the final summary change order, change order number two, at a decrease of $24,810 in the project cost and authorize the mayor to execute the same. The decrease in the project amount is due to the final project numbers. Approve pay request two, final in the amount of $7,180.70 and authorize the payment of the same.
Okay, Mr. Baker's got a question.
Alex, I don't understand seven. Were those repairs previously declared? Was that for a previously declared emergency? Because you're saying July 18.
Right, I believe we missed that originally when we received the invoice. We, we had the repair occur July 18, and then we've recently discovered the invoice or Harvey Services has sent it. I'll check with Harley.
That's fine, but the emergency for which that payment is being, you're requesting payment, has already been declared. So we're not declaring it again, correct?
Correct.
That's why, that's why it's throwing me off there.
Yeah.
And so Harvey Services for the repair on number two, was that the same time, on July 18?
Yes.
Because they're generally pretty prompt about that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So on, in relation to those two repairs, there was an emergency declared prior to that, yes?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to need that for the minute.
Okay.
Thank you, Alex. Any further questions? All right, is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right, Mr. Joey. Good evening.
I'm glad to get, do a, get a do-over, you know?
It ain't over yet.
That's fair, that's true. So let's see if I can make you proud. Looking over this, could I take number two first? Do y'all mind? Mark Beg, we don't have to. I'll go in order, I just, that's fair, I was trying to make it easy on you, leave that one for the end, so you don't exhaust me before I get through it. But let's do this. Number one it is, Mark Beggar, let's do number one.
Okay, can you advise the board as to whether all the prerequisites the public hearing have been met?
Yes, sir, they have.
All right, was the matter presented to the planning commission?
It was.
And what was the recommendation of the planning commission?
They recommended to approve.
Okay, and we're talking about the rezoning request for approximately 6.63 acres on parcel 188-3, PPI N 31577 from rural, from RR Rural Neighborhood to NC Neighborhood Center, is that correct?
That is correct.
Did your department prepare a staff report in this?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the same? Are you asking that the staff report together with all attachments there, too, be appended as part of the minutes of the public hearing?
I am.
Can you advise the board and the audience as to the nature of the application and the position of the department, if any, with regard to the same?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, could you repeat it one more time? Because I thought, I want to make sure I answer you right, Mark. What was that?
Can you describe the nature of the application?
Oh, yes, sir, got it, thank you.
And the position of the department with regard to the same, if any?
Yes, sir. So the purpose, the request, or the applicant seeks, excuse, let me read this again, because I wrote it down so I can get it right and mess it up. Start from the title. Request seeks approval to rezone approximately 6.63 acres. As you mentioned, it's located on the southern portion of a 10.72 acre parcel that is currently zoned NC. The approval of the request would extend that zoning boundary to the southern property line following a recent parcel boundary expansion. The application was submitted by Mr. Jim Eichelberger as the authorized representative of the property owner, Donald Griffin. The staff has reviewed the request and finds that the rezoning is consistent with the adopted land use plan and meets the standards of the zone ordinance.
Okay. Where is the property?
The property is on the southeast corner of Highway 18 and 468.
Having generally heard a description of the application, is there anyone here who desires to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? First, asking for those in favor of. The applicant is here, I know you've submitted information. Is there any additional information you want to provide at this time? Okay. Is there anyone other than the applicant here who desires to speak in favor of the, or desires to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here desires to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here desires to make any particular public comment with regard to the application? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, ask the public hearing be closed.
All right, thank you. We got, please, if you want to come down to the mic, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You couldn't, come on down to the microphone, please. Good evening, and nobody likes talking to a microphone, I promise. But please, just state your name and address for the record.
Marilyn Hughes, 112 Bristol Place, Brandon.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I just basically have some questions. I talked with a Mr. Randy Barnes last week. I was told that it would be about four acres. It would be technically behind our neighborhood around 101 and 103 Windsor Boulevard, and I just want to verify that to make sure that's correct.
Sorry, I had a little hum there. So currently, already zoned NC of that parcel is about 4.85 acres. The expansion is about an additional, a little over 6.8 acres. So it will be six acres, six and a half acres.
Okay. Do you know what addresses that will encompass, how far it will go down?
So I see it goes to the southern property line of 103 Windsor Boulevard. Does that help you with your?
Can you show, can you show her what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I was told that it would basically be possibly medical offices, a florist, no gas stations. That was one of my questions because the area on the corner there was just dug up and new sewer lines were put in this summer. So I was wondering how could you put in gas lines there after all that construction has been going on? And would that be a gas station there?
Well...
The permitted uses for Neighborhood Center, all of our...
Nursery, yard and garden, some type of assembly, cemetery would be a conditional use, community or civic associations would be communal, conditional, library, museum, or art gallery would be, and when it's a conditional, that means they have to come back and ask for approval. A park is permitted, bed and breakfast is permitted, nursing home is a conditional use, office is permitted, medical office is permitted, commercial recreation, golf course, country club are conditional uses, animal care, vet clinic is permitted, grocery store or a convenience store are conditional uses, daycare, dry cleaner are permitted uses, financial services are permitted uses, personal services are permitted, restaurant without a drive-through is a permitted, retail stores, studios for work and/or teaching permitted, public utilities would be conditional, wireless telecommunications would be conditional, then the others are temporary, like a construction trailer, you know, somebody was building something. And that's it.
Okay. Just wanted to...
And further, just because a use is permitted or the board, or applicant receives approval, they still are subject to development review. And to your question, it would, it would be up to the engineers to determine if it can be developed on there, so.
Okay.
To the underlying systems that you mentioned.
Right, because that was just put in this summer, so just wondering how that's going to work out.
So that Neighborhood Center is supposed to be a commercial buffer between true commercial and neighborhood.
Right.
So it's like...
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Answer your question? Good, okay. Thank you.
Very well done, Mr. Alderman.
Does anyone else who desires to make a public comment to the ordinance application?
Okay. All right, public hearings closed, comments from the board? Thank you for doing that, Chris. And by the way, before I forget, because I will forget, I'll start running my mouth again and I forget, Joey should have a red line version of the new zoning in your box this week. It would be all encompassing. Very confusing if you don't take it and go slow, but we're getting it to you ahead of our work session Monday. So we'll send you an email out, if you would, to the board if it falls in the box tomorrow, the next day, so that they've got as many days as possible for our work session.
Yes, sir.
And that's where all of that came from, ma'am. Whole list of it across there, what's permitted and what can be permitted. And kind of when there's nothing there, then it's not permitted, is kind of the way it works.
And, but mayor, if I may, just for transparency, it's the same document that you received before, except the red lines are more clear. There are some suggestions of changes that we're going to keep it the same to keep things consistent till our work session, just so we don't have a lot of versions out.
Okay. And I would eat something before you come, because it's likely going to be a long night, because we're going to go through it basically page by page.
I'm ready.
Monday night. All right. All right, so public hearings closed. Any comments? Is there a motion? Thoughts?
I made a motion to the board.
Thank you.
I'm just making a motion to adopt an ordinance finding that the rezoning of the property from RR to NC is necessary for the reasons set forth in the application to wit that there has been a change in circumstances in the city and a public need exists for the rezoning.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, Joey, now you're going to take number two?
Yes, sir. Number two, consideration to adopt a resolution and order adjudicating the cost of cleanup pursuant to MCA, Section 21, 1911, for the property located at 79 Woodbridge, Woodbridge Road.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Lou Coker?
Second.
Who said that? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams? Any discussion on that, board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thank you, Joey.
Thank you, board. Mayor.
You really think it might be tomorrow when you get through with the book?
Sir, I'm going to have to...
No later, no later in winter? No, don't do that, not really. I don't want you to do that, I want you to go home. But maybe by Wednesday at least, tomorrow, Wednesday? Okay, yeah, sounds good. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Have five items tonight, can I take them together?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, item number one, respectfully request to promote Terrence Kraft and Tammy Hudson from patrolman to sergeant and increase their rate of pay accordance with the memo. And then afterwards, we'll do a quick little promotion ceremony, swear and answer.
Yes, sir.
Number two, consideration to accept the resignation of Robbie Reed or Robert Reed effective November, says on the agenda, November 20, but the memo says November 6. That was a typo on my part. Number three, request to purchase a K-9 train and explosives detection to patrol functions from Checkmate K-9 LLC as the lowest and best quote. The purchase will be reimbursed by the Office of Homeland Security grant that we applied for, for several years. Since we've had the amphitheater, we've always relied upon other agencies that's had a explosives detective K-9 to come in and do a bomb sweep before every show. And Rank NSOs K-9, who we primarily used, has been retired, so it's time for us to step up and fill that role. Number four, request permission to use Motorola Solutions as the lowest and best quote to outfit one of the new Durangos with a mobile LPR at $21,916.84. And number five, consider to declare one, 2022 Dodge Durango Baron, last four of the VIN 2806, and one, 2023 Dodge Durango Baron, last four of the VIN 4127, as unmarked vehicles in accordance with Mississippi Code annotated 25-1-87.
I want you to go back to number two just a minute.
Yes, sir.
You said, you said it was an error, but you didn't say which one was the error. Is it November 20 or is it number six? Which is?
It should be the effective November 6, 2025, according to the memo, but made a typo on the agenda.
Okay, the agenda's a typo.
Yes, sir.
So it should be six. There you go. Okay, just want to clarify there. All right. Is there a motion to approve these four? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Ms. Jerry Crane. Any discussion, question? All in favor? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. Any discussion, question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I've got my one item, I'm gonna start with this, sir. I request consideration to approve the change in employment status for Justin Hales and Michael Williamson, part-time to full-time status effective December 1st, 2025, and approve the rate of paying per the memo.
Great, thank you much, sir. Motion to approve that?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Ms. David Ferris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Don't strike the need for executive session, Board. Been too long tonight already. I do wanna ask you though, before I get up and swear these people in and before we adjourn, Polymeric, the AI, are y'all, uh, up or down on a 90-day trial or community, you know?
We're not obligated to do anything in that 90 days. Only we're not obligated.
We're not obligated. Sure.
I haven't done anything to the Mississippi City yet.
I got you. All right, well, we'll handle that post haste, but if y'all good with that, I'll run that to ground. Okay, administratively, okay. Uh, would like, uh, police officers down front and then fire, and then we'll go from there. Board, then we will adjourn after we take care of these good people. All right. All right, ready by that? Yeah, we're gonna go separate. Let's don't get promoted to sergeant, someone please.
Isn't it sort of like?